But thank you for joining us. The Columbian is pleased to welcome candidates for school director, position two for Vancouver Public Schools. And I'm Greg Jane, the editorial page editor, and I believe you met the other editorial board members. Just so you know, reporter Katie Gillespie is sitting in. She won't be asking questions in this forum, might want to speak with you afterwards. And we are videotaping this. We will post it unedited on our website for the benefit of our readers. And let's see, so finally, we will move forward. We'll get to specific policy questions in a minute, but first, why don't you take a minute or two, introduce yourselves, give us a little bit of background, explain why you are running in this race, and then we'll go from there. We'll start with Anthony.
Sure. My name is Anthony Lucero. I'm a graduate of the Vancouver Public School System, so 10 years ago. So this is like my give-back tour. I'm also godfather of my niece, so like, in a way, I'm stewarding her future for this position and other students.
Mark?
Mark Stoker. I'm the incumbent in the position, finishing my 10th year on the school board. Been in the community for about 48 years. I'm a product of Vancouver Public Schools, having also graduated from Fort Vancouver. Been married 36 years. Our three children went to Columbia River High School, all graduates. I have a law practice in downtown Vancouver, and I've been practicing law since 1984. I'm running for reelection because I think the district is on a great trajectory towards achievement. A lot of exciting things going on, and I want to see the job get done, although it won't totally get done in my next four years, but there's a lot of good things happening, and I want to see that progress continue.
Great, thank you. Let's start out one of the big issues facing schools and for the coming years, as the legislature finally approved a budget that will change school funding. How will that impact Vancouver schools? What do you see as the future for that funding? And do you think that that will meet the McCleary mandate?
Of course, it just got passed. In fact, we're not due for a briefing until Monday at our next school board meeting, but from what I understand from what the legislature has done, I'm hopeful that it'll be good news for Vancouver schools. It will definitely increase funding. How much remains to be seen. The interesting thing about the McCleary decision, our district was one of the first districts to sign on back in 2007, 2008 for the lawsuit, because we strongly felt that the mandate of the Washington State Constitution was not being met. We were funding a great deal of basic education out of our local levy. The McCleary decision said that local levies should not be used for basic education, yet the legislature is doing somewhat of a levy swap. Remains to be seen how much, but to the extent our Vancouver citizens are still going to pay for basic education by having the state take away money from our local levy, that may in fact not satisfy the Supreme Court. Council for the McCleary Group has indicated that they are not satisfied, that the Supreme Court decision is being met. We'll know probably sometime in the fall from the Supreme Court whether that's true or not. So it remains to be seen. I think for me, the jury is still out as to what ultimately the legislature has done. I do know that we're not getting increased funding this coming year. They've sort of kicked the can down the road a little bit, and the funding will start to appear in the next two years to three years out. So that's what I know as of today.
Thank you. Anthony, your thoughts on the budget and McCleary?
For sure. I know as much as Mark Stoker actually knows, but from my understanding with the McCleary decision is that, you know, levies are not supposed to be funding education. Ninety-seven percent of our school districts are actually being funded by levy. So until that point is zero, then I believe state legislation will, that's when we will reach our obligations to fully fund education.
Let me have to follow up on that one, too. Particularly since we have an attorney in house. My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that McCleary didn't say that more money had to be pumped into the school system. McCleary said it has to be essentially the top priority, paramount duty of the state. So, I mean, in theory, the state could have reduced school spending by a billion dollars as long as everything else was reduced, and it was still the paramount duty. That would have satisfied, in my non-legal opinion, that would have satisfied. So the idea that, you know, that because they are asking that the local levy be reduced, that seems to make sense from a legal standpoint, because what it's doing is creating a satisfaction of this paramount duty issue. So am I wrong here?
Well, so the paramount duty is to amply fund basic education. I think the legislature during the McCleary proceedings even admitted that they were not amply funding. They weren't funding to a level that would mean...
Right, they want...
Yes. So they said, yes, we need to amply fund it, but we need to find a solution to get us there. And it's taken them, how many years now, to find a solution to get us there? That solution was to take away from local levies, take state control of it, to fund that portion. But essentially, it's a little bit of a shell game, because if we're paying out of the local levy for basic education already, and then you're going to take those dollars to the state level and pay basic education, we're still paying that money, right? We're just not paying it out of the local levy, we're paying it out of the state levy. The purpose of local levies is to supplement education in your own community. Activities, you know, whatever else you want to supplement that's not basic education.
Do you think this thing is going to be appealed? Do you think it's got a shot?
I think it's got a shot for the legislature to say, no, you have not completed the job. We told you that local levies were not to be used for that. You're taking control of them. But what the legislature will do in reaction is only anybody's guess at this point.
What's your understanding? A little more detail.
Right. There's also discussion of increased property taxes, so also with that, if Bellevue is able to reach that mark with their property taxes, and say Yalma is not, then, or Yakult, then the state has to meet that gap, too. So I mean, that's also like looking at the situation, like, is it really, I mean, there's, I mean, if we're going to use property taxes, then we might as well look for other avenues for looking to fill that gap.
How does that shell game that you're talking about, I see where you're coming from there. So how does that affect Vancouver, where voters have historically been very supportive of the district's levy and bond requests, and very supportive of their school district?
So our local levy cap is going to be reduced. I don't know yet what we're going to be able to collect. Historically, in the last few years, we've collected about $47 million from the local levy. A significant portion of that is being used for basic education. Now, if you take that away and leave us with the rest to supplement the education that we want locally, we're going to have fewer dollars to do it, but we, in theory, should have fewer expenses to compensate with it. So it remains to be seen, in my mind, just exactly how that's going to look for our local community and how we want to supplement basic education with other activities.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering if Vancouver ends up with a net zero, or a net gain or a net loss?
I think we'll end up with a net gain, because we're a district that has a pretty good history with property values, but other districts that don't are going to have a net loss, in my mind. And so I'm not sure that if we're trying to level the playing field in education in our state, so that each child has the opportunity as every other child in the state, I think we're still going to have pockets of districts that have greater capabilities than what other districts do. I'm not sure that's the intent for what our constitution wants.
Actually, one of the things, Anthony, from what you've seen, does, just a simple question, does the Vancouver School District, is there enough money? Do they need more money? Could they spend less? What are your thoughts on the budget?
From my understanding is that Washington schools are the number-one employer, so any amount of money that we invest into any school district is going to directly impact the local economy. So I mean, if we're inputting more money, and then we get the ability to maybe, I don't know, hire another teacher in a classroom, now we're teaching two teachers in a classroom, or, you know, we get another nurse, and then that nurse is also living in this local district, and then, you know, they're feeding that local economy by...
So there should be no end to how much money we spend on schools?
Yeah, there definitely should be a cap, but I mean, if we're investing the right way in money towards our schools, then we should recruit those benefits, for sure.
How much do we, does Vancouver spend any, or what's the general fund budget for this Vancouver School District? Can you give me a hint?
No clue.
Okay. How much do you...
Well, yeah, it's about $300 million, yeah.
As the world dives headlong into the internet life, brick-and-mortar operations are not only being strained, but they're really vanishing. And, you know, people would know further than Amazon to see a sort of prime example of what's happening. I'm wondering, you know, the Vancouver School District, we're talking about the administration that took over, but the Vancouver School District has recently passed a half a billion-dollar bond to build and rebuild schools, and the Vancouver School District has, you know, passed hundreds of millions of dollars over the years as well. Are you guys looking at the idea that you're following sort of an archaic path, and you're spending gods of money on brick-and-mortar places, when, and it exists today, this is not news, that education can now be delivered through the internet without building all of these brick-and-mortar buildings around the community? Where are we at?
Are you talking about online courses for students?
Yeah, online courses for students, as opposed to building a building so that they can come and have a class, you know, in a, in a building.
For sure.
You know, that seems to be the way of the future, but it doesn't seem like school districts are buying in.
That's a difficult one. Online courses require a 24/7 watchdog, I mean, with parents and teachers. Student could want to take their courses on the weekend and just be on that, but I mean, is the teacher going to be available on Saturday and Sunday? So I mean, where are the resources for that?
Well, how about a half a billion dollars that you just come and build them, so that'll get you some resources, too.
Yeah, I'm taking some college courses online for my degree program, and it's very difficult to reach some of, even my instruction structures at the college level, so, and some of the textbooks, too. It's really finicky with like answers, and it really has to be on the dot, and if you can't reach your teacher when you, like, midnight, when you decide to actually sit down and study, then are you actually learning?
Okay, so you're out on that.
I'm not a fully sold-on online education right now.
So I think it's not just school districts buying into it, the community's buying into it. I mean, that bond passed by almost 70%, so it's a huge statement by the community that that's what they want as well. My belief is, there's certainly going to be a mixture. You know, you can't ignore the technology that we have and the ability to learn 24/7 anywhere that you are, but I'm a firm believer that one of the foundations of public school systems is the socialization of students as well. Our society, as it moves and retreats more into this virtual world, sort of loses the connectivity that we need from a social standpoint. And so while we do teach the three Rs, the whole idea of having people come together to learn and to socialize increases that ability. I also believe that these are community assets. Community schools don't just serve the school day, they serve the community all the time. So access to the schools by the community, our community partners, I think makes them an asset that you can really build around as a community, so.
Speaking of brick-and-mortars, do Evergreen School District administration folks still work in trailers?
I haven't been out there for a while, but they're portable sort of facilities, yes. I think they're still in the same spot.
Yeah. So what's up with that? I mean, do you think you should have a real place?
Wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So you guys have a different...
Well, I think, yeah, I think administrative offices have no need to be opulent, but they should be adequate and be usable. So, you know, to the extent that ours differ from Evergreen's, it's more of a functionality standpoint than anything else. So they should be functional. They house a lot of people, a lot of work is getting done there, so they're important facilities, too.
Okay. I'm just curious, following up on that. Anthony, do you think, how much does Vancouver spend too much on administration? Is enough of the money getting into the classroom?
I think any resources we can give to our teachers is beneficial, right? There are a lot of teachers spending...
So is there too much spent on administration?
I'm not familiar with the numbers, but I know that our bond levies do like help cover that cost, too, so I mean, without looking at all the players on the field.
Mark, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think there's certainly a notion that if you spend $1 on administration, it's too much, it should all go into the classroom. The facts are that we're one of, out of the top nine districts in the state, we're one of the lowest expenditures on administrative expenses. But I believe administration expenses are important, because we provide all the supports that the teachers need in the classrooms. These aren't just people doing different things in administrative office, they're there to support the teaching and learning, so those expenses are an important part of the whole picture.
So then, should they be increased? Should Vancouver spend more on administration?
We're pretty diligent...
Or have you found the sweet spot?
I think we're pretty diligent in making sure that those expenditure, we scrutinize them to know that we want money in the classroom. We need the support, so there's a balance that needs to be struck. I think we're at the right place on that balance. As student population grows, or the amount of teachers grow, you need to be mindful of what you need to support that in the central offices.
I have lived at the Vancouver School District as long as you have, I've only been here for 30 years. So it strikes me, and perhaps my perception is wrong, that as time has gone by, so some schools, they do very well socio-economically, and other schools are struggling, I see the gap growing. And it looks like Vancouver has done what it can to try to address that gap, but can you tell me a little bit about what has been done and what needs to be done? And in fact, am I right? Is there a gap there?
Well, I mean, our district still has 51% free and reduced lunch, which is the indication of poverty in the district. There are certainly pockets of the district that have higher percentages of that than others. One of our big initiatives is equity and justice. We firmly believe that every student in the district should have the same access to education as every other student. So we have created opportunity zones in those districts, those areas of the district that need more resources to break down the barriers to learning, and then we have also created the Family Community Resource Centers in all those schools, so that we have abilities for parents and children to come in, get the basic needs met, so that we can then pay attention to the education. So in our district, I firmly believe that we are closing those gaps and not allowing them to open.
Do you have other school districts coming across the state and the country, coming to visit the Vancouver School District to see what you're doing? And is there a sort of standout school that people like to come and visit?
I don't know that I would say there's a standout school. They come to visit different schools for different reasons. You know, we have the Centre for International Studies now at Fort Vancouver, so the Age of Society just recently visited in June, brought all of the partners together for that one. The Family Community Resource Centers draw a lot of attraction, so our first was at Fruit Valley, so that one's one they want to look at. But we try to spread the love, you know, bring them around to see everything that we're doing, because we believe there's good things happening everywhere in the district. ITEC Prep gets a lot of attention. It's going to get more attention when the school gets built on the WSU campus. But yes, we tend to attract, but we also go out, because we want to see what best practices are elsewhere in the country, too. So it's sort of this mutual attraction that's out there.
And Anthony, do you think is Vancouver District doing enough to address disparities between schools?
As far as creating policies concerned for that, I mean, there's more that we can do, but I mean, I think it's going to ultimately help fall on the Vancouver City Council and state legislators to help elevate those areas and pockets that Mark is talking about. There's resources that our school district are providing for our district, but I mean, to lift up those pockets from like Fruit Valley all the way down to like Forest Plain, I mean, we're going to definitely have to look at something to improve those guys.
So you're running, Anthony, against an incumbent. What is it that he's not doing that you want to get in there and change?
I wouldn't say Mark isn't doing anything inappropriate, or anything that would defame the school district, it's just some discussions that are potentially not being heard from minority groups about SROs in schools, and students' school-to-prison pipeline, and restorative practices is on the strategic plan. It's just opening those discussions, and with the geopolitical climate in the US, we're, you know, ultimately talking about deportations with some students or, you know, some families and breaking up those homes, so, I mean, there's a lot of issues that we can be talking about that directly impact our school district.
So, Mark, do you think that's a fair criticism, like you're not spending enough time in one area?
I mentioned several. SROs, of course, one discussion. We have SROs in our comprehensive high schools. I think that's a common practice throughout the country. I think it's a needed practice. We are looking very heavily at equity and social justice, restorative practices. We've been doing that for some time now. I firmly believe that emergency expulsions are still necessary in some cases, but we need to keep those kids engaged, to get them back into the education system as quickly as possible. That's what restorative justice is a little bit about, is to say, I've done something wrong, but I need to recognize what I did wrong and what impact I had on the victim. So it's just very good conversations to have, and we're having them, because we want to keep kids in school. Kids make mistakes, we recognize that, but mistakes should not exclude them from the education system, so it's an important aspect of our work. And it is ongoing, and we can always do better. I tend to see that.
How much of that is the purview of the school board, and how much is the individual school administrations?
Well, of course, the school board sets the policy. So our policy and state law as well. State law has reduced expansion, suspension, and expulsion time. So it's our job, number one, to make sure we're following state law. Number two, to have policies in place that set the standards for administrators to follow. But administrators live and breathe this every day, they firmly believe it. I mean, equity and justice is pervasive throughout the district, so I have ultimate confidence that our people are getting the job done in that regard.
Now, one of the, from the national level, one of the big discussions around education policy involves vouchers and charter schools and school choice. What are your thoughts on those issues?
I believe we, parents have choices between public and private, and that's where it should stand.
So they, we shouldn't give parents more choice? Do you think federal policy should work to provide parents with more choice in that regard?
Our schools are, supply ample education publicly. I mean, my opinion is that their choices are between public and private, and private is able to be a little bit more flexible, because you're paying for that education and buying in that way.
So the public should not help pay for that through vouchers?
I don't, I don't believe they should.
And then what about charter schools? Do you favor the charter school system should be expanded in Washington?
It takes away from our public education system, so.
Mark?
Well, I mean, the citizens of our state decided they wanted charter schools, so we understand that. I don't view it as a problem for us locally, because charter schools are really about choice. And in the Vancouver District, we offer all kinds of choices in education, from magnet schools to magnet programs, so that our families have choice already. They choose to go to a charter school, we don't have any locally, but should it happen? That's their choice, I respect that. That's different from vouchers. Vouchers are taking away from public education funding. And if a voucher is going to follow the student, take funding from the public education system, we have to be mindful of what the consequences are. And I think the consequences could be that although vouchers are billed to give choice to everybody, I think for poverty-impacted families and students, it's going to be a lot more difficult to take advantage of the voucher system, because you're going to have transportation needs, you're going to have other needs that come into play that they may not be able to afford to do.
Are teachers adequately paid in the Vancouver School District? So I'll start with you.
I believe they can be paid more. 72% of the school district has at least a master's degree, and if you're looking at return on investment at a master's degree, it's at least $70,000. I mean, if we can at least meet at least 60 grand, I think is what the state legislature has agreed. But with that also means that increased pay for administrators at some point, so I mean, we got to, it's a give-and-take balance of tug-of-war.
Mark, are they adequately paid teachers?
Well, I guess, how would I approach this? We want to be fair, we want to be competitive in attracting teachers. We want the best teachers that we can get. We recognize there's a cost to that. But teachers are also a bargaining unit, so we have bargaining with the teachers' union to set those pay numbers. So we have a bargain. So in my mind, yes, teachers are paid, but the union believes they should be paid. That's going to change now with the McCleary decision, because the state's taking control of salaries, and we'll be left with some portion of try, time and responsibility paid locally. Don't know what that's going to look like yet. So, yeah, it's a tough, tough choice, but I think we're competitive, because we continue to attract the best teachers that we can find, and we want to retain them as well.
And you mentioned teachers' unions. Are teachers' unions too powerful, not powerful enough?
I mean, we have a good balance in our district. We have the teachers' union and three other bargaining groups, and I think we have good relationships, we've got contracts in place.
And what are the other groups?
SEIU is more of the laborer side of things.
Surface supporters.
VAESP is more of the secretarial types, and then VAPA is the administrators, principals and associate principals. Those are all bargained groups.
Okay. Anthony, are teachers' unions too powerful, not powerful enough?
I believe they're right, they're in the balance where unions should be. I mean, yeah, teachers' unions help establish the guide rails to, you know, establishing salaries in.
So if there's one issue, one thing you need to fix in the Vancouver District, what would you say it is? What would be the first thing you would change?
Addressing the low-income families, but I mean, that's going to take community partnerships with the, with city councils, state legislators.
So by that, you mean providing more money for schools in those areas, or...
Even making food programs free, overall.
Mark, what would you change?
I guess I would say, I don't know that it needs fixing, but it needs continuous improvement, and that's student achievement. That's always my top priority. I think it's the top priority of my colleagues. We want to see student achievement continue to progress. We have a lot of areas to improve. We have achievement gaps yet to close between minority groups and poverty-impacted students. So we're continually looking at those barriers and seeing how we can break them down, so that every child can get the same education in our district. That's a paramount important to me.
What do you think are the most important ways to measure student achievement?
Well, you can open up the whole book about testing. I'm not a big believer in high-stakes testing from the standpoint of it being a graduation requirement, a one-time test, but I think assessments and testing tell us where students are. The important thing to do is to look at student progress of cohort groups. If I just take a snapshot one year and say, here's what we had, and I don't follow that group forward, then I don't know whether achievement is being made or not. So we have multiple assessment tools that we're able to get in and see what every student is doing by way of progress. Once we know that, then we can bring stuff to bear to help them, whether it's interventions for tutoring and whatnot.
So you would still have comprehensive tests like that, but not necessarily as a graduation requirement?
That's where I would be at. I think there's other ways to meet the graduation requirements. If you want to test for a graduation requirement, fine, but also have other ways to meet these standards without just the test, so.
Anthony, what do you think about high-stakes testing?
Not particularly in agreement with it being in the graduation standard. I mean, I was a summer graduate myself, so I mean, I was able to graduate high school later in the summer and achieve, and then I'm here 10 years later, running for school board, so what's the measurement of success is the ceiling, you know, whatever.
But would you still administer those tests just to get...
Yes.
To be able to assess...
Yeah, they would, assess the benchmark to where the students at, not to be the end-all-be-all of where we can, because if they're not meeting the requirements to, at that level, then where are we losing? Where can we gain ground, and where can we meet those gaps at?
Well, then, we'll move on. Give us your final pitch, why voters should support you, and go ahead and mention any notable endorsements. Start with Anthony.
I was endorsed by the young Democrats of Clark County, so with that endorsement, I believe they believe I am the right choice to... with that endorsement, I believe they, believe I am the right choice to move the needle forward for the future education. Um, and with that, uh, that's my elevator pitch, I guess.
Well, we've accomplished a lot in my ten years on the board, um, and I'm very proud of what we have accomplished in the Vancouver School District. We have great community support, I think the community believes we have great schools. I wanna see the work get done, I wanna see the bond projects get done on time and on budget, uh, so that we deliver those promises to the community. I wanna see us continue to close achievement gaps, increase graduation rates. All the things that we're working on right now that are moving us forward, I wanna see us continue. And so I believe that, um, if people like what they see in the Vancouver School District, that's the work I wanna sustain, and that's why I'm running again for four more years. Uh, endorsements, I'm not actively seeking endorsements, um, there's probably people that endorse me that I don't know, but I haven't been out, you know, soliciting groups.
Great, well gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.